Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of May 18th, 2021, a virtual Planning Commission meeting as we continue to follow county orders to shelter in place and practice safe social distancing due to the threat of the novel coronavirus COVID-19. As a reminder, items will be taken in order that they are listed on our agenda. Before we get started, I'd like to make a couple comments about when we have public comments. And this, we have public comments two places in the agenda tonight. And we ask that speakers let us know if they wish to speak by raising their hand, and also that everyone is respectful of everyone's time and opinions as there's multiple opinions within our room. So now we will go on to roll call. Ms. Exlin?
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Bondano.
Here.
Commissioner Munier.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Shu.
Here.
Vice Chair Hunter.
Here.
And Chair Radcliffe.
Here.
And were you going to introduce staff to us, or would you like me to do that, Ms. Exlin?
I will, sorry, announce the other planners that are here today. I will, with us today are the other city staff. Diana Odell, Principal Planner. Veronica Ramirez, the City Attorney. And Christina Mateo, Administrative Secretary and our meeting host.
Perfect, thank you. Next on our agenda items are--
Chair Radcliffe?
Yes.
I'm sorry, should I be turning off my video right now? I'm trying to remember the protocol.
Um, you know, I--
Or maybe-- Maybe for staff?
I think we do want video off when we're not speaking, as well as the audio.
That's what I thought, okay.
Too many buttons to move around.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is approval of the minutes. We have March 16th, 2021.
I move to approve the minutes of March 16th.
I have a motion by--
A second by Commissioner Bondano.
Great. Motion by Commissioner Hunter and a second by Commissioner Bondano. I guess we need to do a roll call because you can't see us all, correct?
Okay, so Commissioner Bondano.
Yes.
Commissioner Munier?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hunter?
Yes.
And Chair Radcliffe.
Yes. Great, thank you. Next we have minutes from our May 4th, 2021.
I'll move to approve those too.
Motion by Commissioner Hunter.
And a second by Commissioner Bondano.
And a second by Commissioner Bondano. Once again, I believe we need to do a roll call.
Commissioner Bondano?
Yes.
Commissioner Munier?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Abstain, absent.
Vice Chair Hunter?
Yes.
And Chair Radcliffe.
Yes, thank you. Next we will go on to public comment. This is the portion of our meeting that is open to the public for any comments that are not on our agenda for the evening. If anyone would like to make a comment, could you please raise your hand? And I am not seeing any raised hands. Great, thank you. So we will go on to the consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar. Next we'll be moving to item number five. It's a public hearing, single-family homes in Redwood City. It has been noted that this is an item that we will be re-noticing. We will be putting this to a further agenda, so we will not be covering this tonight. So that will take us directly into our study session. So the study session on regional housing needs allocation, ARENA, and the process to update housing and safety elements and to prepare an environmental justice element or related goals and policies. So we will have a study session and discussion. There will be no formal action that will occur from this. And I believe Ms. Odell will be our staff who is giving us the presentation.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commissioners, and thank you. I'm excited to talk to you tonight about the regional housing needs allocation and housing element study session. This will be a very meaty issue that we will be working on over the course of the next two years. And what I'll be telling you tonight is really for your information and an opportunity for you to ask questions and give me comments. So, next slide, please. So this presentation I'll be making is similar to one that we gave to City Council on April 26. And we wanted to make sure that you have the opportunity to hear all the same information and give an opportunity to provide comment. So we'll talk a little bit about where we've been with our housing element programs, accomplishments, and progress. We'll talk more about where we need to be with our upcoming housing cycle. What are our goals? What are potential development projects and solutions? And we'll be talking about some new ideas that we'll have this time round, which include planning for an environmental justice element, updating our safety element while keeping a focus on incorporating equity throughout. And then we'll end with next steps, talking about community engagement, additional land use and planning studies, and sort of an overall schedule. So we'll go to next comment, next slide. These are some questions. These are just ideas, some things, some feedback that we would like to hear from you. But also, if you have other questions or comments, we encourage you to give those to us. We're talking about specific housing and planning strategies that the Planning Commission would like to prioritize. Are there specific areas or corridors you'd like identified as potential housing sites? And then if you have additional ideas for us to supplement our public engagement and outreach efforts, suggestions are welcome. And then lastly, talking about environmental justice element strategies you will also want to prioritize. And so I'll give you background information on all of these sort of topics so you have a better frame of reference for answering your questions. Next slide, please. So while many of you know this, I will briefly review what a housing element is. So it's a chapter of our general plan that must be updated every eight years that's specific to housing policies, and it's mandated by the state of California. It has basic building blocks that give us the information to understand our housing needs. So we do a series of technical analysis. We look at our housing needs assessment. What are the demographics of our community? What are the income levels of our community members? What is the housing stock like? You know, what kinds of housing has been built? And what is its general condition? We also do a constraints analysis, and what that does is look at different forces that affect our ability to provide housing. We look at market forces, cost of construction, types of land prices. We look at natural hazards, what kinds of hazards and risks we need to be looking at. And of course, we also look at zoning regulations and how they may be providing constraints to developing some of the kind of housing that we want to see. And then we also do a project where we look at identification of sites to build housing. And this is a big piece of the housing element process, where we look through the city for ways to meet some of our regional housing needs assessment. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next couple slides. And these technical analysis forms sort of the building blocks for the foundation for the goals, policies, and implementation strategies, which are really the most important part of our housing element. Next slide, please. So this is an example of some implemented programs from our current housing element. So for example, we formed partnerships with nonprofit housing providers, both in providing financial assistance and land to develop all affordable homes. We changed our development regulations to require onsite affordable housing for market rate residential development. We also looked at preservation of affordable units. There's existing naturally affordable units on the ground today. How do we preserve those so that those community members can continue to live affordably in our community? And then lastly, we looked at accessory dwelling units multiple times, as this commission knows, in terms of increasing the flexibility. And as we've seen, increasing the flexibility for our development regulations has resulted in a significant increase in the type of those units being built. So those are examples of implemented programs that we will be looking at for the next cycle. Next slide, please. So a lot of this is based around our regional housing needs assessment, which for short, we all just say MINA. So our last housing element cycle, ARENA, was about 2,700 units. And we're doing a really good job in terms of meeting our overall ARENA. We are actually on track to exceed ARENA with expected units of almost 4,000, a little over 4,000. We expect, based on the number of entitlements that we've given, that we will exceed our low-income affordable housing needs. We still have progress that we need to make on very low-income and moderate units. But looking at those numbers, we also have to compare them to what our new challenge will be for the upcoming eight years, and that will be almost double. So about 4,600 units is what our draft allocation is. And as you can see, we'll have additional challenges in terms of providing very low-income units, low, moderate, and above moderate units. And so for our upcoming housing element process, we're going to have to look throughout the city and say, okay, where can we provide these units? Next slide. So the good news is some of this work has actually already begun. The city is starting environmental review for the potential transit district, which could provide up to 1,000 units of housing. The Gatekeeper Projects, which is another set of projects primarily in the downtown, though there are some that are outside the downtown, will also provide approximately another 1,000 units. With these two planning, city-led planning processes, we could get almost halfway to our regional housing needs allocation for the next cycle. And that's work that's already underway. However, we still will need to look for additional housing sites through zoning strategies. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of the city zoning map, and we'll focus on Redwood Shores on the next slide. Bright yellow is single-family, darker orange and tan color is multifamily, and mixed-use commercial zoning is located predominantly along El Camino and Veterans. So Christina, if you could just click a couple times. Thank you, and a third time. So these green circles on the slide show where almost all of our new housing has been concentrated. And that's been in the downtown and in the corridor areas, next to jobs and transit. Single-family and multifamily neighborhoods have generally not been as affected as our downtown and corridor areas. And while this has been a successful strategy, the city may need to broaden its scope for good housing locations to meet the increased ARENA. Next slide, please. So here we have Redwood Shores, and I just wanted to be able to zoom in close enough so you could see it. Same colors, so yellow and orange are residential, single-family and multifamily zoning. The pink is a precise plan area that's also predominantly residential. Redwood Shores has seen some new office development. We recently approved a new office complex on Twin Dolphin. And we have the new Design Tech High School, but not much residential development has changed recently there. Next slide, please. So what kinds of housing strategies can we think about for the next housing element cycle? We've talked a lot about missing middle housing. Missing middle housing is duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes that are built in about the same sort of size and shape as a single-family home. And we actually have quite a few neighborhoods right now in the city that have this type of housing. They're usually in our older neighborhoods, but where we have a single-family home next to a duplex, next to a triplex. And so it's a mix of different units. And there's been some interest the last couple of years about taking a fresh look at our zoning code and making sure that we can encourage those units where it makes sense. We might want to think about extending the mixed-use corridor zoning to Woodside. Right now, we have mixed-use corridor zoning along El Camino, Veterans, and Broadway. And those have been very successful, as I showed in the previous slide. We've seen a lot of development there. There may be an opportunity this cycle to take another look at Woodside and see if a mixed-use corridor zoning would assist with some development along that corridor that has good bus service. Also, we could look at increasing the residential caps in the downtown. Right now, we're very close to hitting the maximum caps, and we would be looking at expanding that further to encourage more residential development close to services, close to jobs, and close to transit. And we're also still looking at anti-displacement strategies, making sure that all members of our community that want to stay in Redwood City can stay. So right now, we are studying possibilities for preference in allocating affordable housing to existing residents and additional measures to retain residents when buildings change. So some of these strategies are being considered right now by our Housing Division, and we'll be bringing them forward for council consideration later in the fall. So there's even more strategies that are possible. The city is currently doing a rough back-of-the-envelope study to see how much housing could be produced using some various strategies. The city is looking forward to getting some of this very rough numbers and then really working more intensely with the community, with the Planning Commission, the Housing and Human Concerns Committee, to look at what these ideas are for where we should be putting housing for our next housing cycle. Next slide, please. So, moving on now. We are required by state law, when we update our housing element, to also update our safety element, which includes looking at natural hazard risk and mitigation strategies. And in light of the recent fires and sea level rise concerns, updating this analysis and incorporating it into our land use policies is an important step for sustainable housing. The city also has three census tracts that will qualify as disadvantaged communities. And as part of that, we're required to create a brand-new environmental justice element. This element will address community needs in terms of looking at everything from how pollution burden, food deserts, lack of park access can disproportionately affect lower-income neighborhoods and suggest policies and programs that can help address-- address that. Next slide, please. Some examples of environmental justice strategies include improving air quality, increasing healthy food access, locating public facilities and physical activity near key neighborhoods. Are parks serving all of our neighborhoods equally? What additional policies should we be looking at for safe and sanitary housing? And how do we ensure that we're getting the right kind of engagement from residents of those neighborhoods and understanding their priorities and making sure we invest accordingly? Next slide. Which brings us to equity. And as a foundational guiding principle, the housing element and update process will be considering equity throughout the process. So in engagement, more specific steps are taken to engage underrepresented groups, including multilingual materials, stakeholder groups, and community partnerships with particular groups that work with more low-income communities. The consulting team with City Input has created a list of organizations, and individual calls are being made to these groups to set up interviews and invite them to participate in our process moving forward. And equity involves not just input, but also the assessment of rezoning and policy benefits and burdens as part of the staff analysis and recommendation. And this will be a step that we'll be taking extra care with this time. We'll be looking at our different land use strategies and very thoughtfully thinking about who benefits from these policies, who's burdened by this, and are we thinking about this the right way in terms of equity for all of our residents? And then lastly, staff will be looking at creating a monitoring program to assess the effectiveness of these policies on equity measures. And this will allow us to make changes and improvements over time. Next slide, please. So on May 12th last week, we had our very first workshop on community values. We are planning to have many other additional workshops, surveys, interviews, stakeholder groups, and small group meetings that will be continuing through this process with targeted outreach to specific groups. I'll give you a quick summary. It went well. We had at most 45 people that came, and this, of course, was a virtual workshop, as they all still are for right now. And we were able to give them a short presentation and then have three breakout groups. And in the breakout groups, we asked community members to give us feedback on what kinds of housing values were important to them. And we got some really good early information. Diversity was an important value that was discussed over and over again in the different groups, both economic, ethnic, and racial. There was also talk about diversity for the types of housing. Duplexes, triplexes, missing middle housing did come up as a value that people wanted to see. They wanted to see multi-generational households being accommodated. Prioritizing homeless and low-income and making sure that we're providing all the services that we can to those vulnerable populations. And supporting schools, teacher housing, families with students, making sure that we're doing what we can. The last two were making sure that we're still building lots of housing near transit in walkable communities next to services. And then lastly, that our community remain clean and beautiful as it is. So we're taking some of this feedback. We're also doing a lot of initial, like, individual outreach to groups because we want to make sure that we're reaching all of these groups that are here on the bulletin slide. And we're hoping to sort of conclude this process in the next month or two, and then we'll be publishing some of the results of that. The results will help inform us in terms of what kinds of strategies we should be thinking about, keeping in mind what those values are and how do we structure our land use strategies, our environmental justice strategies around those. Next slide, please. So the next steps are on the screen, and briefly, they include the current phase of outreach, which is just getting underway. In late fall, with community and council input, the city will try to determine one preferred strategy that will be analyzed through CEQA, through the California Environmental Quality Act. Draft policies will be established, though more drafting will need to occur. And so it'll be a complex project. We'll have both the housing element, and we'll be having environmental justice discussion, and we'll be updating our safety element policies. So there's quite a bit of work on our plate. Spring and summer of next year will include continued community outreach and HCD review of our initial draft element language, with late fall certifying the EIR and adopting the proposed elements with Planning Commission and Housing and Human Concerns Committee recommendations. The city is required by law to have a state-certified housing element by January 2023. So sometimes while I look at the schedule and it feels like there's a lot of time, I know that there is not. Because unlike many studies, the city undertakes, this process does have a hard deadline. January 2023 is a hard deadline. The elements must be prepared and submitted to the state by then. And this does create certain constraints. Staff is spending significant resources trying to make sure that the community outreach is done as comprehensive and as efficiently as possible and that we're keeping all of our decision-makers and boards and committees informed as we move forward. Next slide. So we have a website. We have an email. We encourage people to email us with questions, and we're going to add you to our list. We're also partnering with all the other jurisdictions in San Mateo County. This is a longstanding process. The 21 elements is an informal collaboration of all the cities and the county in San Mateo, and we've created a website. And we've also tried to partner on some of our outreach and resources. And so we'll be working with them throughout this process. Next slide, please. So this concludes my presentation. I'm just going to end here with some of the original questions, but I do encourage the Planning Commission to provide other comments or ask questions as they need to. And this concludes my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Odell. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commission? Not seeing any hands shooting up. Um--
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chair Radcliffe. I was--
Yes.
My mouse is not working quite right, so I couldn't get a raised hand. I have a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Outstanding presentation, Ms. Odell. I always wondered, is there a carryover from how we did in the current process to the new one? In other words, you know, we are overall above our allocation for the current one. And some income levels were ahead, some were behind. Does the surplus or the deficit that we have in any of those carry over to the next set of numbers?
That's a great question, and unfortunately, the answer is no. We get no credit for overshooting. So I think we'll take some of the wins and the strategies and things that worked, and we'll use that again, but unfortunately, we can't carry forward the credit.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Shu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to offer a brief comment for verification from staff. You were mentioning, Ms. Odell, the significant number of potential housing units that may be anticipated with regard to the Transit District and other gatekeeper projects. My experience with this, I actually have done two of these housing elements, and the city or county cannot actually take credit for housing production unless actual permits are issued for those units, not just land use or planning approval. So I thought I'd mention that, and hopefully get your verification for that because I know eight years does sound like a long time for something like a transit district-- sorry, I forgot to put my video on-- for a transit district process to take place and for approvals to be obtained and for permits to be issued. But in reality, it may not necessarily be that all the permits we anticipate, you know, major takings like that would be actually issued during this housing element timeframe. So I thought I'd just simply offer that as clarification and hopefully get your verification of that so that the rest of the commission and public understands that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shu, if I may respond to that question. That's a good clarification. So there's two big things that we do as part of the housing element. The biggest thing that we're worried about right now is something called housing opportunity sites. So we need to, at the end of our process, go to the state and say, okay, our ARENA is 4,600 units, and we have identified these sites in our city that have the capacity to build that. And it's a very technical process in terms of determining whether you can call a site an opportunity site. The great news is that if you have developer potential and interest and an active application, that those two things go a long way in terms of you supporting your statement to the HCD that this is a housing opportunity site. So if we've got developers that have this interest in providing housing, we can go to the state and say, look, we're providing, you know, ahead of time. This would be some of the housing opportunity sites. Now, Commissioner Shu is absolutely correct, though. Every year, we have to do a report card, that annual housing progress report, where we have to say, well, how many permits did we actually issue? So that's the sort of second half that we will worry about once our housing element is certified, is we're going to be trying to meet and make sure that we're actually entitlementing and permitting, building permits for that number of units as well. and make sure that we're actually entitled and permitting, a building permits for that number of units as well. Please let me know if there needs to be additional clarification.
Well, thank you. No, no, no further questions.
Okay, any other clarifying questions from commissioners? Okay, seeing none. We will open this to the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make a comment? If you could raise your hands, please. Okay, not seeing any. I will go ahead and close the public comment. Without a vote at this, this point, we don't need to do votes. So let's go into a discussion. So among the commissioners, let's have your feedback and discussion so that we can give staff some insight into our thinking. Commissioner Bondano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Vice Chair Hunter. That was a wonderful presentation. Thank you, Ms. Adele, for, for providing that. It's good. I have to say I've been through a couple of these, not only on the planning commission, but before that on the Housing and Human Concerns Committee. So, but there's some, there's definitely some new things that have happened over those years. And one of them is this environmental justice element. And so real quickly, in the staff report, it says that we, we could do that as a separate element or choose to, I guess, just layer in components of what addresses that portion of the general plan throughout the other elements. And I didn't get a sense, maybe we, maybe we don't quite know yet, but does staff kind of have a point of view, or maybe at some point we could figure out other pros and cons to doing it one approach versus the other?
Thank you. Yeah, this is the obviously the first time I've worked on environmental justice element. I think some of our initial thoughts were to sort of weave it throughout the existing general plan. So right now our general plan has policies and programs that have a sustainability focus and they have a special icon next to them. And there, you will find them in different elements throughout the general plan. And we were thinking maybe doing something similar with our environmental justice policies. However, there's pros and cons to that. So I would look forward to having a more thorough discussion on that when I better understand maybe some of the pros and cons as well.
Yeah, I completely appreciate that, that it's, it's kind of new for everybody. And normally I'd say, hey, what, what else, what are other jurisdictions doing? Maybe what, you know, what other examples might others have weighed those pros and cons as well? And could we learn some lessons from others? But my guess is that we're especially through twenty one elements, we might all be just in the same boat. And no one's necessarily pulled ahead of the other, but if there's that insight, I'm sure we would love to kind of hear that as well. So thank you for that. My other quick question at the moment is also looking at this with a lens for equity. And again, the staff report introduces it. But it also says like, hey, we may not yet know exactly what form this is going to take. And so more, more to come on that. Can you maybe shed a little light on that or give us a potential ETA on when some of that might start becoming more into focus?
Yes, thank you. We've been working with our Equity and Inclusion Officer, Brianna Evans, who is assisting the city really in all of its equity initiatives. And we're pleased that the housing element is sort of one of the priority projects that we'll be working closely with her on for the, for the next couple of years. We've been doing research. She's provided some great examples of other cities that have done this sort of benefits and burdens analysis, I think is one of the key elements I'm very interested in. Obviously, the city has worked to do, to include equity in our engagement efforts and there's always more that we can do and we're going to be trying some new strategies this time around. But in terms of applying it through as a policy analysis, I think we're, we're still looking at different examples and how we do that will evolve over the course of the study.
Okay, again, understood. And, and certainly the, I will speak for myself, but I think the planning commission is very eager to see how that evolves and how we intend to use it, leverage it. But I'm also hoping it's enough of it is done in time for all these outreaches, the community outreach. So that the public and the community has an idea of its criteria and its use. I think that would definitely aid the discussion and all the community outreach sessions as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bondano. Any other commissioner comments? Okay. Commissioner Hunter.
Let me, oh, good, here I am. Oh, well, I think the background might just show up by itself in a few seconds. But thank you. So I have a couple of comments on the, on this. The first question there, the specific housing and planning strategies. One thing I would want to make a point of is to make sure that we focus on any unintended consequences of our policy. And there's two that come to mind. There certainly are probably others, but the ones that come to mind to me are displacement of existing residents, which was addressed in Ms. Adele's report. And the other is exacerbating the jobs housing imbalance. And in my mind, the jobs housing imbalance is one of, if not the main cause of the housing shortage. And whenever the region builds offices, but doesn't provide enough housing for its new workers, including the low income support workers, the housing shortage gets worse. So I can see a perverse tension between meeting our arena goals, meeting arena numbers and actually solving we're doing work to solve the housing crisis. For example, if we would, were to rely on a, say, a huge commercial development to provide a large number of homes. But the development itself creates the need for twice as many homes as it, as it provides. Then on the one hand, we would have helped our arena numbers. But on the other hand, in terms of the actual welfare of the city and its residents, we would have made the housing, the housing situation worse. So I think that is just a thing that we need to consider when we're doing this. And in the meeting, I watched the meeting, the city councils meeting of last month. Mayor Howard proposed one possible way to deal with this, which would be by asking each project to address its impact on the job housing imbalance. And there are many other way, many other ways to arrive at this, but I would want to keep that in mind that there are times in which help, making progress toward arena numbers could actually, you know, harm the, you know, housing shortage. As far as other planning strategies, I would, and some of these had, were already discussed, but I just want to emphasize that I would definitely also want to focus on the preservation of existing housing, as was mentioned in the report, in addition to new construction. That's so much, you know, cheaper to maintain and preserve existing housing as affordable housing than to build new, new units. And I think finally, under our Affordable Housing Ordinance, if we are, if we find that we're falling, if we're, you know, in excess, like we are in the current cycle. You know, we're in excess in low income, but we're behind in moderate and very low income. Possibly changing the mixes of affordability in our Affordable Housing Ordinance to promote the construction of some of those that were short in. As far as specific areas or corridors, I agree with the ones that are proposed. I think the Woodside Road Corridor, you know, as a transit oriented corridor should be, should be a prime focus. I agree with adding to the downtown caps, but I wouldn't want to limit it to just those areas. I would want to I want to think the whole, the whole city, Redwood City proper, as well as Redwood shores should be a place to look at. And I do have to say that I'm a big fan of missing middle housing, as was discussed. Or, you know, house sized buildings that include duplexes and triplexes, and I would want to investigate allowing those in more areas of the city. And my final comment is just on the justice, environmental justice strategies, which I'm very excited about including that as an element. And I guess as a former Parks Commissioner, and so one of my passions is, is our parks. I would want to make, I would, I understand that underserved communities are often have much less shortage, much less access to green space and parks. And so I think it would be, it's going to be important to work with our Parks Department to provide green space in those private areas that are found to be priority areas for housing. And parks are one, are like the one area in that list of environmental justice elements. It's the one area that the city really has direct control over. And so those are my comments. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunter. Commissioner Shu.
Thank you. I don't necessarily have a lot of specific comments on each of the four topics. I know this is a very preliminary informational workshop at the commission and I don't, I know that many of these subjects will continue to be brought up over time and, and there will be many, many additional opportunities, whether we're on the commission or for the public to weigh in on some of these. One was mentioned, I think specifically about downtown downtown caps and those types of things. Those were established, if I understand it correctly, through the precise plan and its environmental document. So I think we really do, as a general strategy and priority, we need to be thinking very much more long range about the vision of the downtown, not just the transit district. When we think about what housing potential we want to see and what type of design requirements we want to see for these buildings as they populate downtown. Heights I know are a sensitive subject for many in the community. I support, for instance, limiting the, the impacts of building heights in the immediate vicinity of the courthouse, for instance, which is the historic center of downtown. And on the other hand, when I look at a site as an urban planner with a history of experience in this, like Sequoia Station, I have to say, I don't think through this process and the transit district process, that the city is doing itself any favors by somewhat arbitrarily limiting the notion of heights for some of these buildings and their massing based on what's in the precise plan now. Many, many cities would, would give an arm and a leg, to put it mildly, to have a large central site like that on which to create landmark attractive urban development with mixed heights and massing that creates true urban forms rather than a simple set of equally tall buildings that are patterned after what's been built so far, which are large block occupying buildings, but without a lot of articulation, without very much open space involved within or, or other features of an ideal urban design. So I think those two comments also pair quite well, I think, with what Commissioner Hunter was saying, and that is we, as planners, we tend to think our housing element is a task. Yes, it is a task. It is something of a numbers game. It has a finite set of requirements. The regional housing needs allocation has to be shown how to be met. But it is also an opportunity, I think, to look at more distant horizons. We are focused on an eight year planning horizon for a housing element. It's in the state mandate. But housing is a problem in most urban metropolitan areas like, like ours. It is, it is a problem where areas have an economy that is exceptionally good at creating wealth. And I think we need to keep in mind supply and demand is also not just the only issue, but the ability and willingness to pay in an area of high wealth creation creates extremely difficult issues for maintaining housing affordability and sustainability long term. So thinking long term, we need to look beyond, even in this housing element. Where would the housing sites come from with our current projected rate of, of office and economic development, employment based development? Where will the housing sites come from for the next two to three cycles? We're only talking about a generation, but we, we all know all, almost all cities have limited land supply for these types of things. And the more you commit to major office development for some of these or mixed use areas, you're taking lands not necessarily to suggest this, but a site the size of Kmart site on veteran, you know, that's a fairly substantial piece of property. There may be a few others like it. I think we actually have an obligation to think a little bit beyond this current housing element eight year cycle, as Commissioner Hunter was saying, and think about what does what does a long range projection for another generation of development, the way it's happened over time? What does it hold for this area? Because we know what we've got from fifty years of Silicon Valley. We know exactly what we've got. We've got a preponderance of cities on the peninsula that do not produce enough housing. We have a city like San Jose, which is struggling to create jobs in order to balance housing. We have longer commutes for that. So those are my basic comments at this time. I don't want to speculate on engagement or equity or environmental justice. I think there'll be plenty of time and staff will have a very good handle on how to develop those and take those through the public process. But those, those are my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Shu. Any other commissioners? Mr. Bondano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Commissioner Shu. There's, there's a lot yet to be done. There's a lot of a lot of iterations, a lot more study and a lot of discussions that will take place. So none of this will be with a, with a fine, sharp pencil, but more broad strokes. So, but a couple of things I did want to, I did want to sort of mention at, at this time. I am, I don't know if prioritize is, is a strong of a word we want to use. I don't know that I would start, start to stack right these things just yet, but I am interested in learning more and studying more about the mixed use corridor along Woodside. And what I also remember from a number of years ago when we were studying corridors was Veterans Boulevard. And I didn't hear that come up in this evening's conversation. So I think we, we should, we should take a look at Veterans Boulevard as another corridor, as another potential opportunity. Commissioner Shu, rightly so, already commented or mentioned the, the Kmart site on that corridor. And so I think there, there could be a lot of opportunity there as well. And would also be interested in learning more and identifying maybe what the benefits and then the potential impacts would be in increasing the residential caps within the downtown. So those are three things that kind of, at this moment, sort of float to the top of my interest list at this point in time. Terms of additional planned engagement and outreach effort, you listed a lot of them. I'm sure we'll come up with a number of them. I just like and want to encourage everyone gets as creative as possible. It sounds like we're really attempting to step up our efforts. The city's going to step up its efforts even more so than anything that's done in the past. So I applaud that. And I don't know that I've come up with a magic bullet to add to the list. But let's just keep thinking out of the box and get creative with being able to do that. And then, yeah, the environmental justice element. Again, I don't know that I have anything to add in terms of an extra, an additional bullet item, but But yeah, and I don't know if I have an opinion. So I'd love more information. So I could potentially formulate a point of view on, should it be a separate element or. Dispersed and folded within the contents throughout. So. But again, thank you. I appreciate all the work. I know there's a lot of work yet to do and many hours are going to go into this. So I'll just upfront thank staff, consultants. The small army of people behind you, Ms. Odell, that we know are going to be working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bondano. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. Just wanted to add my two cents to the discussion. I first wanted to note that, you know, the city has done just such a remarkable job in meeting the real numbers for this cycle. And I think looking ahead to the next cycle. I'd like to see us prioritize building more affordable units, you know, at various levels of affordability we had discussed, but. Also consider looking at, you know, anti displacement measures to keep our most vulnerable residents sheltered. I think it'd be a good idea to look at what city funds could be used to support. You know, the nonprofit developers that are currently doing this good work. And maybe those funds could also be used to preserve the naturally affordable units that already exist. I was also thinking that I'd be curious to hear if, you know, if those funds do exist, if. Maybe it's a possibility that we could also subsidize existing units. In a deeper levels of affordability. I know that that will save a lot of the construction costs associated with standing up a new building. Lifting the residential cap downtown, I think, is also something worth considering. You know, setting part, what parts of the city could logistically support mixed use zoning. Would be ideal to me, not just limiting it to Woodside Road. I think. It was Commissioner Badano who mentioned adding, you know, Veterans Boulevard to the list just now, and I think that's a great idea. And finally, just with, you know, state legislation pending on the issue, I think we should be looking at. You know, the impacts of rezoning all of our neighborhoods, but, you know, carefully prioritizing. What neighborhoods could logistically support adding, you know, more housing units, especially missing middle, but, you know, without exacerbating, excuse me, the existing issues that. Folks are seeing there. So, and maybe in line with the environmental justice element question there, maybe those. Neighborhoods could be, you know, the less pollution burdened areas of our town. So just. Some of my ideas on these issues so far, but. That's all I've got right now. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Any other comments from commissioners? Great. I, I guess it's my turn. A couple of things I would like to look into is a lot of our. Affordable units are only affordable for. As I believe either 30 to 50 years. So is there any vehicle where we could. Continue these deed restricted units? So I don't know what that would look like, but it could be interesting. Also. Could we get a true assessment of what type of. Levels of housing we really need? I've heard, and I don't know if this is true, that some of the different levels. Are having a harder time being filled. That that's not really where our needs are. So it would be interesting to know. What we're building, what is actually being filled and what is going vacant for whatever reason, so that we. So that we do build what is our population actually needs. As far as our downtown caps. When we first did the EIR for our downtown, we did three different levels of building and housing. And as I recall, the most conservative was chosen. And so it might be interesting to go back and, and look at some of our old numbers that we were looking at that we didn't choose. So that might be kind of interesting. As far as areas in the city, of course, Woodside Road, Veterans Boulevard. One area that we had kind of a discussion on when we did the general plan last time. Was actually looking out at the Seaport area. This is an area that is. You know, very low office buildings at this point. We do have the road structure and the infrastructure out there. So we had had a rather robust discussion. About would that be an appropriate area for housing? Maybe with the new influx of biotech. Being a very important factor for this area, maybe it's not, maybe it'll, it's an area that will turn to biotech versus housing, but it's, I think it's an area that. It's worth looking at. And. Let's see, I think that is all of my points that I wish to make. Looking forward to. You know, our planned engagement, you know, at one point, and this was many moons ago. We actually did community outreach on Courthouse Square. On a Saturday, so. Getting kind of a different population than what we would usually get at a Monday night meeting. So that could be something. And really looking forward to how we can implement our environmental justice in all these different levels. It's going to be. A huge learning curve for all of us. So those are my. Comments to staff. Ms. Odell, do you feel that you've received enough input from us?
Yes, this has been really helpful, and it's also given me some ideas about topics where I may come back and we may do certain topic specific. Discussions with the planning commission to sort of further delve into some of these good issues that you've identified. Thank you.
Great, great. So I just want to do a circle back and make sure that there are no other commissioners who want to make any more comments. Great, seeing none. We will conclude the items for this night's agenda. And that will be the end of our study session. We've given staff. You know, a few things to think about. Next, we'll go on to matters of commission interest.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Shu.
I'm sorry, I tried to raise my hand in time before we concluded this item. Was wondering if it would be possible simply to ask staff a question at this point.
Absolutely.
It's a short question. I can remember when I was working with a new number of cities in Santa Clara County. We have various discussions about these matters in terms of how much actual money it takes to subsidize. And achieve a very low income housing unit. And years ago, the general number. That I remember discussing with planning directors and others in various cities like Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, and Mountain View. We were still 10 years ago talking about something on the order of half a million dollars. Being required to create a subsidy for a truly affordable, low or very low income unit. So I suspect those numbers have changed, but I was wondering at some point, not necessarily tonight, but for your future discussions. If staff could bring information back. So when we, so when we talk about funding sources for low and lower income housing subsidies. City resources, those types of things, staff could provide a fairly. Concrete number for people to keep in mind because it was no small number. And a lot of people in the discussion in the public are not aware of the extent to which it actually. The subsidy is required to create something that we're talking about when we, we talk generally like almost air quotes of affordable housing, but we're really talking about. Low and very low income housing substantial subsidies, as far as I can recall. So that's my only. Question. It doesn't necessarily need an answer from staff tonight. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you, Commissioner Shu. Great point to bring up. Because it's always kind of shocking. Great. So that concludes our study session, and we will go to matters of commission interest. And. Tonight. We have former Commissioner Ernie Schmidt, who has put in his resignation because he has gone on to another board. And he is now with the Police Advisory Board and. I still want to call you Commissioner Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, Schmidt, would you like to say a few words first, or do you want me to go first?
Well, it's up to you, Commissioner Radcliffe. I do have some, a few words already prepared, so however you would like to. To do it, I'm happy to oblige.
I will let you start off.
And then, would you remind me again, is this with camera off or camera on?
We would like to see you, please.
Okay, let's see if I can.
And while you're figuring that out, I will make a note that Commissioner Schmidt has been with us on this commission for 12 years. And he's going on to a new adventure.
Yeah. And you can see me just fine, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Thank you. Great to see all of you. Ms. Ramirez, great to see you. You were pretty much at the start of all of this when I started my planning commission, so only appropriate to. To see you back here on the, on the virtual dais. So really appreciate seeing you. I actually had like a five page thing going on here, but I did send it to Ms. Ramirez, and she shortened it down to about two or three paragraphs for me, so. It'll be, it'll be a little short. But I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. I can't even begin to describe to you all. Even those of you. Who are disappointed, how much my 12 years serving on this commission has meant to me. I have had the greatest opportunity to be a part of our city's growth, and in that time, we have learned so much from each other and especially from our community. I remember my first meeting, how nervous I was and afraid to even speak, thinking I was going to say something wrong. But my peers at that time made me comfortable in my new world, and it did not long, did not take long for me to find my own voice. From the planning commission, I found other opportunities to serve, probably way too many of them, if you ask my wife. Not only here in Redwood City, but at a state level where I had the honor to coordinate and plan planning commissioner academies that brought planning commissioners from all over the great state of California. Together in one place to learn, to network, but most importantly, to help them find their own voice as well. Our planning commission has always been a family of sorts. We have supported each other on a personal level and have supported one another on this virtual or live dais. Even during times when we didn't see eye to eye on an, on an agenda item. We always found a way to use the difference of opinions we had as opportunities to learn from each other. Even if we had to continue to ask more questions of our peers to better understand where they were coming from, and at times. We found those opportunities to lead to a completely different outcome. For the simple reason that we were able to listen to one another respectfully and understand. Where those thoughts or opinions were coming from. Was it always a win win? No. But I take a great deal of comfort in knowing that wherever that decision landed with this commission, that it was made with a great deal of thought and preparation. So I want to thank all my previous colleagues who I'm had, who I have had the pleasure of serving with. And my current ones and several of you whom I've had the honor of serving with pretty much since I came on board. Commissioner Bondano, Nancy Vice Chair Radcliffe, and, and then Vice Chair Hunter. And thank you for the incredible planning staff and attorneys that I've had the honor of working with on this commission for the past 12 years. I can't say this enough. I know there's so much on your plates, and I can only imagine that there are days that you think that you're all caught up. But then something else gets put on your, on your to do list. And even through that, you always have found time for this commission. You are all a tremendous asset to this community and to the planning commission, who you help in ensuring that we are prepared with the information we need to make an informed decision. You have always been open to suggestions and learning from this commission, but most importantly, you were all kind of left to laugh at my humor. My advice to the newly appointed planning commissioners. This path that you have embarked on, don't rush trying to get from point A to point B. It's a path that's intended to be taken slowly and with great deal of patience. Be open to learning from your colleagues, the staff and the community. And never, never be afraid to change your mind. Because you will find times where you will have that aha moment. And that decision that you were already ready to make, all of a sudden takes a completely different turn. Because of something that you learned from your colleagues, staff. Or community members. So thank you, every one of you for making my 12 years an incredible experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much, former Commissioner. Ernie Schmidt. So I would like to open it up to the floor, to my fellow commissioners for any comments. I see a hand for Commissioner Shu.
I'm sorry, I believe, I thought I had lowered my hand from that previous. Previous comment, so I will lower my hand. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Commissioner Bondano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ernie, I thought you said Veronica pared that speech down. I'd hate to see what it was before. Ernie, it, it's amazing. I still kind of a little bit in denial and disbelief that I have to put the word former in front of any title I have for you. But there's one thing is for sure, you are never, will never be a former friend, companion. Coach and mentor. And I just want to say that. I joined the planning commission a few years after you had started, but from day one, you were a tremendous mentor and colleague and coach. And treating everyone with respect and all, and the newcomers when I was one, again, same thing, you, you took that initial learning and you made sure that you. Turned it around and paid it forward and gave back to anyone else that was going to come along. And partner with the rest of the commissioners as a unified body, not always in agreement, but at least a unified body. In our efforts to really put ourselves aside and, and serve our community for the betterment of our community. And you are the poster child. For having done that. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I, I have learned and I continue to learn so much from you. And the things that you say, the perspectives that you bring, but many times just watching and observing. And so my gratitude just overflows and I, it's bittersweet. I wish you all the best of success in the new adventure, and I know you're going to do well. But you will be sorely missed here on the planning commission. So my hat's off to you, my mentor, my friend. And you're right, you're not going far. So I will still see you downtown.
Thank you, Commissioner Bondano. Commissioner Hunter.
Great, thank you, thank you. Yeah, Ernie, I have, I have to follow, you know, Kevin by, you, he emphasized one of the same things that I was going to, which is you've been a mentor. And a relative newcomer, you know, compared to Kevin and to you, but in my time on the commission, you've been a mentor and you've taught me so much. And, you know, I see how you make decisions and how prepared you are, and. I really appreciate and how knowledgeable you are, you know, your, your role with the, you know, the planning commissioners academy. But what I think I really appreciate more than anything, you know, seeing you is just how you relate to people. You have an ability to put people at ease and to relate to them and really hear. The community and the other commissioners. And to, and, and in a way that they all know that you are understanding what they're saying, whether. Whether an issue comes to the same, same conclusion or not, you just have this ability to relate to people. Some of it is your, is your humor. And some of it is just your.
Some of it is your, is your humor and some of it is just your attention to others. And that's something I really have learned and appreciate about you. And the city is lucky that you're going to be going to the Police Advisory Committee. And I guess I have to say that, given the, given the subject of the Police Advisory Committee, your humor is probably going to be really important to have on those meetings there. So as Kevin said, you're, you're not going anywhere. And while we will be seeing you frequently, I hope. Best of luck, buddy.
Any other Commissioner comments? Okay, Commissioner Martinez.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add my praise along to the rest of my commissioners. Thank you, Ernie. You've been a great resource for me and just catching up to speed with all of you these past, past six months now. So I really appreciate just your willingness to share your insight and, and always be ready to jump on a call. So I really appreciate that, Ernie, and I'm glad I know where I'll be able to find you. So best of luck in your next commission and, you know, I'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, I will, ah, our city attorney.
Chair, if I may, just make a couple of quick comments.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So former Commissioner Schmidt, I just have to say, I want to echo what everyone already has said. It has been a pleasure advising you, even at times when you didn't like the advice you were getting. It really was a conversation and you were willing to listen. And I have to say that you are a mentor to many, in many capacities, sometimes more quietly than other times. And it is really appreciated. And I think that's something that you'll be able to carry forward in this new commission you'll be working on. And I look forward to advising you on that committee as well. Thank you, Chair, for letting me have some time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. I guess it's my turn now. Ernie, 12 years. What am I going to do without you, buddy? It's going to be very strange. You know, everything that everyone has said, but what really strikes me, besides your corny jokes, of course, is your passion. Your passion for the city and your passion for the residents of the city. And you are always willing to go the extra mile for any, any need that you see needs to be filled. And that's such a wonderful quality that it will surely be missed here on the commission. We've just always appreciated your insight. You know, you and I have not always seen eye to eye and that's a good thing because once, when you have good discussions, better things come along. So, but we have certainly grown to appreciate each other, love each other, and have a great bond. And I know I will continue to see you often. So thank you so much for all your service in this capacity and looking forward to what you will be doing in your next capacity. So with that, I will, we will conclude that part and we will go on to our tentative agenda, which I believe Ms. Exline will be going over. Or is that Ms. Adele?
Yes, I will go over it, Chair. Thank you very much. So coming up on June 1st, the start time will be at 6:00 PM for the interviews with the H R A C. And then those appointments will be made at the 7:00 PM meeting. There are two other items currently scheduled, 935 Johnston Road and 2603 Broadway. On June 15th, two items are currently scheduled, the Planning Commission Work Plan and accessory dwelling units.
Great. Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Exline. And with that, we will conclude the planning commission meeting for May 18th. And we will see you June 1st. Have a great Memorial Day weekend. Thanks.